So we have to behave.
Or be recording.
Call the meeting order. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We are recording the meeting as long as the duct tape holds up there. I'll ask council to cozy up to the microphones when you speak so we can hear it. And the same for our guests when you give public comments. We speak into the microphone and everybody will be able to hear. We'll post this to YouTube sometime in the next couple of days, unedited, as recorded. Do a roll call.
Meeting.
Here.
Perry.
Here.
Wong.
Here.
Skutulski.
Here.
Bosziper.
Here.
Wakeman.
Here.
Mayor Gardner.
Here. Much. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda in the minutes?
I propose a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through B as presented, waiving the reading.
Support.
We got a motion. We have support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carried. Thank you. Bills of warrants. Do I have a motion?
I propose a motion to approve bills of warrant number 14223, paid in the amount of $11,568.10, and bills warrant number 14224 unpaid in the amount of $4,145.78, and the visa in the amount of $4,328.65 as presented, waiving the reading.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion on that or questions?
I just want to share what Charlie shared with me, that $1,200 on the visa bill was for cameras. It's probably not Parks and Rec.
That's what I was just going to ask, what it was cameras for.
Yes, that was the grant for the security cameras on the lighthouse. That will cover the pier.
That Dewey was doing.
Yep. Hello. Yep. Anything to add, Dewey?
Nope. The MTP grant will pay that back.
Yes.
We already have.
Yep. It was a 100% grant. So that is actually to our insurance company. They fund things like that to help public safety. Good question. Any other questions?
For the record, I just wanted that set, so.
Okay. Yep. We'll do a roll call vote.
Perry.
Yes.
Needham.
Yes.
Bosziper.
Yes.
Wakeman.
Yes.
Skutulski.
Yes.
Wong.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried. We don't have any presentations. I see Chris Hennessy is here. We'll ask him to come up and explain during new business with our funding, category B funding request. I'll have him be able to answer questions on that. Moving on to the mayor's report. Thank you, everyone at Parks and Rec. I know Diana will have more on that later, but I really appreciate everybody that came out and put in a lot of work to help beautify our community with the cleanup, with the dumpsters. It really helps with the blight, getting rid of junk. It's very expensive to do that in all your own to the landfill. This really works well. Allow us to get rid of just household junk, scrap metal collection. Do we have a figure on that of how much?
I don't have that yet.
But we took in a truck, a trailer load of scrap metal that, all the money from that will go to Parks and Rec. And thank you, Mike Mossing, for donating his truck and hauling it in and taking care of that for us. That reserves space for the dumpster for real junk and we get money for the scrap metal. We appreciate that. These are things that people do to make our, really make our city great. And there are many people to thank for all the work you did. Jennifer Drawt-Tar really took it over and really ran with it. And we really appreciate her work there. And several people that worked all around in all the parks and worked on the gardens. It really brightens up our community.
And we had a lot of volunteers from Jennifer's son's karate class and.
Oh, great. Great.
Volunteers, yes.
Yeah, this is the first one I had to miss in years. So I'm really sorry not to be there. I really appreciate everybody doing it. It really made a difference coming back into town and seeing that. We have new plumbing and hot water from a energy-saving on-demand unit now. The work is complete, including the plumbing repairs and the restroom upgrade. Now we can work on flooring in there because not everything else looks nice. As we'll keep going on that. But not saying our water heater was past its prime, but it was manufacturing when Jimmy Carter was president. That is remarkable. It outlived him even.
Yeah, they did comment how large it was.
Yes.
The DPW.
Yes, that will save a lot of money. It was a, that was an old unit, 1979 it was manufactured. So we're glad to have that up and running. It was the oldest unit our plumber has ever seen, still in operation. We were victim of, victims of an illegal tire dump on Erie Road. I'm sure you heard a lot about that. This appears to be criminal work of, you know, a commercial enterprise that similar dumps were found around the county. It probably was the same culprits that dumped in different areas. Police agencies are investigating this, including Luna Pier Police Department, working with other agencies around the county. We are communicating and collaborating with Erie Township to get rid of the tires because they are our responsibility. Ultimately, if somebody gets caught, we might get reimbursed, but it's our responsibility to get rid of them because they were dumped on city property. Monroe County, Monroe County Road Commission is not equipped to haul tires. It's not in their funding. It's not in their jurisdiction. They unfortunately, they can handle one or two tires, but not a load like that. We are cooperating with the, with the county though. They are doing a used tire collection next Wednesday. So if you have tires around your house, you can get rid of them for free. If we can get these tires to them, they will dispose of them for free. So now we got to work on getting them to, up to Monroe efficiently.
There's a couple of people in town with trailers.
Well, we want to.
Michael Mossing too. He has a big trailer. He might be willing to transfer.
We really have to look into the legal ramifications. It's illegal to haul more than seven tires without a license.
Really?
That's been law.
Well, there's enough people in town.
Yeah. But we're, we're working on that. I mean, we just, we just got back and we just don't have those details worked out. We'll get them up there. And we're just working on the details of that. So I'll keep you posted. We just don't have those things solidified yet.
Were there any cameras? Did Diana make you have any?
One camera caught a truck going down there. We know about when it happened. There was no identification. All we could see were headlights. We can work on that in the, in the future, but at this point, there's nothing from our point. Now, I don't know about the other, other places where the tires were dumped. Like I said, several agencies are involved in that and trying to find out who is done, who is doing it. It's happened before in other parts of the county.
Baker Creek Road.
Where was the other one at other than Baker Creek?
Baker Creek Road and Monroe Township had one. I heard about it actually the day before the one we had. And it may have been down at the seminite and it just didn't get discovered, but they're all around the same timeframe. I know the, I saw the one on Baker Creek Road the day before and then the other two popped up in the morning. But several agencies are working on that and we're working on getting them out of there and cleaned up. Stay tuned. There's more details to follow, but we'll, we'll get it cleaned up and then we'll work on how the catching the perpetrators. It was a criminal act. If anybody has any information, contact City Hall or your local police agency. We'd love to hear from you and would appreciate any information anybody has out there. That's all I have. Any questions? Now we'll move on to department reports. The police report was enclosed, covered some of the things that I talked about here. No fire department report and no building report. Committee reports, DDA. I think there are a few things we had a meeting this week.
We sure did. So the DDA did move to contribute to the island beautification project in collaboration with Parks and Rec. We also did also, wow, we also moved to contribute, I think it was $12,500 to the beautification as well as investment in the area around that lighthouse space for Adirondack chairs, trash bins, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. Good, exciting stuff. Yep, just to beautify the area. I like that the DDA is taking ownership of that area and they have some money to spend at their discretion. So they are investing in our downtown area.
We're also investigating what's the use case for the lighthouse.
Yep.
Can be current state.
Yes. Yeah, some very encouraging progress there. I did learn that we had, through the heavy rain that we had, we've had leakage problems in the past and we had no signs of leakage with this past rain that usually caused leaks. Northeast wind with hard rain.
So.
Got that and it's dry in there.
Connie's not in the room, but it was amusing to watch her walk around the lighthouse checking for drips on the skid tiles. We were met in the lighthouse for our DDA meeting in the middle of that rainstorm, so.
All right.
It looked fine.
Good, good. Good to verify that. No report from flood erosion. We are working on some dike inspecting and looking at some of the areas there of concern. Parks and Rec. Diana?
Just to clarify, the island beautification we're talking about is the traffic island right there at Luna Pier Inhaled Drive. Amy Gardner has volunteered and done a lot of the work. And DDA and Parks and Rec have partnered to give her some financial support for that, to keep that going because we think it's a central, nice, nice area in the city when you come in to see it. They had the cleanup, which Mayor already alluded to with the scrap fundraiser. We had a lot of volunteers. Flowers were planted by the sign here at Water Tower. They cleaned up the planter. There's flowers by the door, flowers at Memorial Park. So they did an excellent job. And then today the DPW put up our volleyball net here at Water Tower.
Very good. Very good.
Do we have any information updates on the memorial bench?
No, I've requested that it be installed, but I haven't heard from anyone when that will happen.
Yeah, Dave, Dave is on it. He just, he didn't give me a time.
They're short many hours, of course, men to do it. And they're trying to catch up with grass cutting with two of their three mowers out of commission.
And, and our monsoon season.
Yes.
Yes, but it's on the agenda.
Yep. And they are working in the rain trying to get everything done as quickly as possible. But the, that bench, we have had discussions about that. Planning. Anything to report from planning?
We'll meet next week.
Okay.
For the open meeting for the master plan, so.
Okay.
And that will be on YouTube.
May 27th.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock here at Water Tower Park.
Thank you.
Yes, that's an important meeting, just to clarify. We're reviewing our master plan and taking, a public hearing for our master plan. And in the process, we're very close to completing that project, which is exciting. That's very important to our future. Anything else to add, Shawnee? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, planning commission recommendation for the marijuana facility overlay. We introduced that last week for our charter and for Michigan law for zoning that we introduce it at one meeting and we can vote it on it in a separate meeting. We, this involves the proposal to expand the existing overlay to include the Luna Pier Plaza, also known as the strip mall. The planning commission recommendation for the downtown mixed-use district, we also talked about that. Two hot-button items in one agenda, two weeks in a row. It's, appreciate everybody's input and hard work on that. These are very, very important and difficult decisions that we have to make. Resolution number 978 for 2026 category B funding request. This has to do with the opportunity to fix down your road with some federal matching funds. And I'll ask Chris Hennessy to come up and walk us through that a little bit, if you will.
Evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council, here to obviously answer more questions than walk through the process. This is a.
Can you, yeah, turn it up? Just point it towards you a little bit.
How's that? Is it picking it up for the recorder? I don't think it's on either.
Uh.
It's not on.
Do you need it?
I, I hear it.
For the recording?
Yeah, I figured. How about?
Yeah, it's, it's on.
This is the first time I've ever done this.
That's better.
Yeah, that's better.
So the category B grant is, it's a, it's like a niche grant. It's for Michigan cities and villages under 10,000 populations. So the, the city has not applied in the recent past, at least in the past six years. The, the mayor and I first talked about this a number of years ago and it didn't come up due to the fiscal situation. The city now has the ability in their budget and their, their road budget to apply. So the category B grant is for, like I said, small cities and villages under 10,000. It's a grant 50% for construction. So if awarded, it would cover 50% for local roads. These are not, the mayor mentioned federal, not federally eligible roads. These are just the roads that you have to pay for yourself without any federal assistance. No major, minor collectors. These are just strictly your local road system. So we think it's a pretty strong application. Adjacent to a park, I was out there earlier, obviously taken pictures of it, which need to be included with the application. You all have driven it. You can't drive it straight, as in all the cars that were doing the same thing. You know, going off to the shoulder to get around the potholes. So picture is included with the application. But in particular, adjacent to a park, you only have one other way outside of the community. We think it's a pretty strong application. So it's something that, again, just to mention, we first visited a few years ago. The city now is in a position to apply for the grant. I want to answer some more questions. I think in your packet you have all of the information. Mayor, I don't, we've met no less than three, four times on this. So happy to answer some questions. What goes in the application is estimates, pictures of the road that I mentioned, the application itself, a resolution which is required tonight that the city will commit the funds if awarded the grant. There's no, no, there's nothing that the city has to spend or anything if not awarded. And I wanted to mention that. So if the resolutions pass, we made note of that under, there's a PSA, professional services agreement. Under, right at the front, under number three, the italicized text, this is all predicated on being awarded the grant. So we're, we think it's a pretty strong case. You have not applied, at least in the recent past. If not, it doesn't look like in the past 10 years. So you'd be considered a new applicant. And, you know, again, just the limiting factors, the positive thing being adjacent to a park where your public meetings are. But also, you know, it's used by the locals to get out of the community as opposed to the other way in and out. Which, you know, God forbid there happened to be a spot where you could not use that exit, you know, from the community by I-75.
Last year.
The goal. What's that?
All last year.
Yeah, I was, well, I mean, that was planned construction, but you know, I mean, the goal would be that you'd have access to and from, so.
Yes.
It would have to answer, you know, questions we put in the resolution. So you know, you're, the total for the, so it covers just construction. So we put in our estimates. We had a higher contingency, excuse me, contingency. It's at 10%, which is, you know, ideally we'd like to keep it at 5%, but it's just some uncertainty right now with material and, you know, things have stabilized the last couple of years. This would be a project for next fiscal year. So you'd apply, it's due June 12th. It's awarded typically in September. And then you'd go through design over the winter and then your construction would be in '26. So our math was all predicated on another year of local road funds, which still leaves you enough in your local road fund if you had emergency repairs or anything like that. But the estimates are broken down just so you can see it. I mean, ideally it would be great if the contingency didn't go that high. We just wanted to be on the safe end. So what, what this application if awarded, they will fund up to that. You know, if the project comes under budget, then, you know, you get to make a decision whether or not you want to expand it a little bit or give the money back. So once you've budgeted that, that is the one thing about MDOT. So it's locally let. You don't have to go through, it's not an MDOT let project, so you're going to manage it locally.
Okay, that's, that's important.
Very, very. Makes it a lot easier, a lot smoother and a lot less expensive in terms of the project. So I'm happy to answer questions. You know the road, what it looks like. Estimates are through Merle, which is through MDOT, the standard program news.
So would this be probably a worst case? Is it likely to come in lower? Is it just a safe, could it come in bid higher?
Yes to all those.
Okay.
I mean, it's pretty, it's, again, it's Merle, which is used by MDOT to do estimating.
Okay.
Usually pretty, pretty accurate, but we don't, we don't, I mean, there's not like curb and gutter. There's really not anything that is outside of what would really cause, you know, big concern or anything like that. So it's a good opportunity. It's, I mean, it really has a good narrative to put in for the application. They typically award around 20 to 25 around the state per year.
Okay. Now, does the engineering include any kind of core samples? To know what's underneath that?
I think we were planning to do that, to know how deep, but off the top of my head, I, I don't know. I think we were, we were planning that though. You know, because we've talked about some of the plans that are not necessarily as accurate as the city would have, well, like every small community.
Right, right. We, we don't, we, we don't know what's underneath it, so.
Not, not uncommon for a community the size, so. So the mayor covered a couple of my questions there. Question for the mayor first. Where again is our portion of the funding for this coming from for the audience?
Local roads. And we do have enough in the local roads to cover that comfortably, I would say.
So to your question, even if it goes over?
We would still be able.
Still have the cushion to cover?
Yes. Yes.
Something?
Yep. We, we could pay the entire amount probably out of our local roads, but that would cut us down.
Yeah, our goal was not.
Yeah, I understand.
Was to do the least amount of local, you know.
Right. I understand. So in the worst case, yes. That's a good, good question. Yeah, we do have, I believe, over $300,000.
So he mentioned, thank you. And he mentioned that the engineering services are not included in this. Does that? Where would the funding for that come from and does it qualify under the same pocket?
None of the engineering fund cost comes out of, is a, is a 50% match, is not. None of that is matched by the grant. 100, we pay 100% of the engineering costs.
Understood.
On that.
Wasn't the question.
What was the question?
Where does the funding for that coming from?
It's.
The same fund or elsewhere?
Same fund, yeah. Yeah, everything we do for the road has to come out of local road.
Okay.
We, we also have major road, but that does not qualify. Major road funding. We have enough to do some things with, but it does not come, it's not eligible for this spending. And those would be a separate project altogether. We only have four major roads in the city and that's not one of them.
What's an estimate for the engineering?
In the estimate, we just put 18%, you know, based on.
34/6.
Based on construction.
It's on this paper.
Pretty.
And I.
I got it.
Had an engineer, as I reported before, to come out, look at it, was going to give us a price on the package. I have not heard from him even after reaching out and saying what is our quote. I am not confident. I would not want to go with him for any project.
Is our road even be able to be mandated enough to get us by until next year to hold off on waiting on this grant and not doing any construction until next year because it's.
We can do some patching. We can't do a lot with it.
I mean.
And that's the, that's the downside. If we paid it upfront, we would pay the total cost of it. If we can patch it and wait one more year, we can get a significant portion covered by the grant.
I just didn't know if with the size of some of those holes, if maybe they are beyond being patched, even though they can be.
There, there's not a, we can't make them great, but we can, we can fill them in so nobody loses a car. And if we don't get the, if we're denied, then we're back square one and we, we're on our own to pay for the project. Because it can't wait for another grant cycle. Those are, that's just the risk we take.
What are the, do you, is there any kinds of odds of, you know, likelihood of being awarded versus not being awarded?
Yeah, I don't, I wish.
I know it's not like the lottery, but like, I mean, in your experience, have you seen other communities get approval on this?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I mean, this, so it's definitely a, I personally work with this particular grant program a lot in my role at FNB. So, yeah, I mean, communities, they, they move it around the state. And then a pretty compelling application based on the narrative and you haven't done it. So, I mean, I, I wish I could say that, yeah, hey, MDOT's going to fund your grant.
No, I know you can't give it to you, but.
You know, from driving it, it, it's not unrealistic if you don't get funded to revisit and cross it. I mean, you've done your due diligence and applied for what's available for your local road. This is really the only outside funding available for communities of this size for your local roads, you know, outside of Act 51, which you get every year. As an outside comment, it could also stem on how well it's written. Yeah, that, thank you. That was great. We'll look forward to your feedback. Because, I mean, we'll obviously give the rough draft back, but I'm sure you could add some.
Yes.
Insight on that, sure.
And we have.
He adds a lot of color to his stories.
When our brand-new power lines dropped over the overpass at one time, that was the only way, because you couldn't even get on 75 at one point. So that was our only road at the time.
Additional comments section of the application.
Things like that to put in there.
That local knowledge, yeah.
Obviously, our, building this overpass was definitely a hardship and that is really what did the road in.
But if you, and as council members, before I step away, you know, the resolution, you just have to pass tonight committing. And it's due, we'll get it in the 12th. We can submit. We will work with the city to do it. Just, if you had some downtime, you can do it on your phone. It's the MDOT category B. You can pull up all the applications and kind of see the communities that are similar to Luna Pier. It's probably something to think about, you know, putting it in your rotation regularly too. You're not going to get funded multiple times in a row, but you also have to build up a balance within your local road funds. So if you looked at doing something, you know, every four to five years, then, you know, you're applying for some local road funds. And then you're also trying to secure, you know, outside funds too, and then you can tackle a bigger project. Now, I, I share that because my firm, you know, we work with small to medium-sized. Now, I, I share that, cause my firm, um, you know, we work with small to medium sized cities, not, we're just not built to do large, larger cities in Michigan and extremely talented firms that can do it. So we have, you know, staff that are aggressively trying to help with, with grant funds, really on the smaller community end, so.
That's all. I have any other questions?
Happy to answer. I'm gonna step out after you vote on it though. I just want, I've been a council member in a former life, so. Absolutely gonna step out after.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Great Lakes Greenery LLC sign. What this is about is they want to put a sign out, but since their property doesn't extend all the way down, that they would need to put it in the city right away and that would need council approval.
Excuse me, is this a replacement sign or a new sign?
It's a, it's a new sign.
Okay, then just cross out the replacement in the most.
Okay.
Because I thought it was a replacement sign.
There's a sign there, but.
There is one there.
There is one there, but.
Replacement, but it's to replace it with a new sign.
Yeah, with a new, yeah. So either one is really appropriate.
Thank you for that, though.
Any, any questions on that?
Like, how much larger is this sign? I know the dimensions aren't here, but.
It's significantly larger.
Seventy-two inches high, yeah. That's pretty tall.
Significantly larger, significantly taller.
And since they're voting that in the city right away, that'll be hooked into the city's power or?
No, they would be responsible for the.
Okay, they actually have to run a line all the way up there?
Yep, yep, they will have to power it. Power it. Uh, and that's what actually the hotel does. They have a separate drop to their sign.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? I think it's something to consider since they are tucked back in a ways. It's just something that we, that we should consider with that. It's, if you look.
Yes.
At the size of the sign, it's, you know, about the size of the height of an average human, according to the dimensions there. Any other questions on that? We'll move on to community input. This time we'll open up the, the microphone, open up the floor to the community. Sure, Charlie will be running a timer for five minutes. We'll give you five minutes to say whatever's on your mind. Uh, remind you, you're addressing the council here, not really addressing the room, although they can hear, but you keep your focus up front here, cause we wanna hear what you, what you have to say. And I invite, now, open the floor. Any, I see Marilyn's hand up. Just state your name and what city you live in.
Marilyn Foster, 4360 South Fifth Street, Luna Pier, Michigan. First question is, uh, are you doing Citizen of the Year this year and when does that go out?
Yes.
Because it's getting.
I will have that out this weekend. It's, uh.
Yep. Okay. And then, um, I wasn't here two weeks ago, but I watched the video and the lawyer said he'd have the blight ordinance ready. Jury pushed him and he said, give me two weeks. I don't see it, maybe you guys have it. Um, we're supposed to get a police report on blight. I don't see that. Uh, you guys have that, that's all fine and good. Um, this is absurd, totally absurd that this process has taken so long. And, um, I pay my taxes on time. I do everything I'm supposed to do. All I ask is this city to knock on my neighbor's door and tell him to knock the crap off. Because if you saw it, it's disgusting. There's no need of it. They walk by every day and look at this second piece of property, but they don't look at it every day. And the neighbors, everybody on our street has worked really hard to, um, clean it up and we're all on the front of the lake. And I think it was a decision of all the neighbors of not helping them. They got plenty of money. They could, and I'm just using this as an example. They own three pieces of property in this city and they don't take care of any of them. And, but this one next door to me is today, it, you, it's easily four feet high, easily. And yeah, everybody nods at me, mayor, and everybody says they're gonna do something. And I'm really tired of it because I went out and told my neighbors and people in this town that I trusted something was gonna be done. And all these things in this committee, and I look like an ass because nothing has happened. Nothing. And just on my end of town, if you go down the other end of Fifth Street, there's two properties in particular that sit across from each other, deplorable and disgusting, uninhabited pieces of junk. There's one on Genoa, Genoa Street. I was down there a while ago and I almost dropped dead when I saw that. There's one on Eighth or Ninth Street that's disgusting. There's the one on Lakewood. So if, if people are getting fined, they don't care. And I haven't seen, as being on the planning commission, and I haven't seen that blight proposal, but if we're going back to a $50, uh, punishment, then why bother? Because they just nod and close the door. So, um, people in town have said things to me, my neighbors have said things to me. And, um, it's not okay. It's just absolutely not okay. I'm paying close to over $7,000 a year in property tax. That's my choice to live there, but not between that, when everybody on that whole strip is killing themselves to make it beautiful, especially for the Fourth of July event. So everybody nods at me and everybody and I, I, I really like you, Mr. Mayor, but if I get one more nod about this, between you and the lawyer, and, and here he is. He said, he looked jury in the face and said, give me two weeks. That's today and he's not even here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, that'll tie in nicely.
Good. My name is Terry Steiger. I live at 10936 Harold Drive here in Luna Pier. And I'm here to get the ball rolling on some legislation as it pertains to public nuisance, noise pollution. 10936 Harold Drive, right across the street from, uh, what has now become a dirt bike track in the middle of our city. 4.7 acre piece of property inhabited by family members, private property with children who drive their motorcycles and their dirt bikes often. I'm gonna go back to some notes so I don't rant and rave for 25 minutes. I'm on a timer. Your last meeting a couple of weeks ago, the city attorney reminded you of your responsibilities to the citizens of Luna Pier. And I believe it was something along the lines of protecting public safety, health and welfare. And that all kind of falls into a quality of life issue. Make no mistake, the quality of life of dozens and dozens of Luna Pier residents, adults, has been adversely affected by the constant barrage of dirt bike noise from a couple of children who can ride all the way up to and sometimes onto Harold Drive with no consequences. They can ride along the edge of their property lines with no consequences, but the noise doesn't stop at property lines. We're talking dirt bikes, motocross, not street legal motorcycles here, just, just kid things that are loud and obnoxious. That sound travels through all of our homes. If it's nice enough for you to walk your dog, they're out there on a bike. And the only thing that stops them is 10 o'clock at night. That's when we have quiet hours in this city. There's literally no restriction at this time that can negate any of that. Who hasn't been on Harold Drive and had a minibike come charging up from the side of the road, getting just inches away from you? Cars swerving. It's dangerous for drivers, it's dangerous for pedestrians, it's dangerous for bicyclists. Those of us on Harold, Ann Street, and of course, the residents of Evans Landing, we deal with a constant barrage of nonstop dirt bike noise when these kids are out on their bikes. And that noise can last for hours. There's ordinances in the books for setbacks for almost everything in this city, but not that. There is no setback for noise, is there? I would like city council to consider enacting legislation that would ban the use of these types of gas powered recreational vehicles within the city limits. If it isn't legal to drive on our streets, like our golf carts and whatnot that we allow, then you shouldn't be allowed to ride around recklessly near our streets or property lines. At a minimum, I'd hoping you would at least see the need for substantial setbacks from the busiest street in town as well as the need to protect the quality of life of the residents in the area. And I know I'm done early, so I have, I'm available for questions.
Well, I want to know that there's a noise ordinance in Luna Pier and it doesn't mean it has to stop at two, or 10 o'clock at night. At 2:00 in the afternoon, I got a ticket for my dog barking. So I know that that's a different, I don't know if that's a different situation. But it's still part of the noise ordinance is how I ended up in court.
Right.
So if you're having that many complaints, are you calling?
They haven't, I haven't called. I have been in contact with several neighbors. The police department's been called several times. They've investigated it and.
But they've issued no tickets and no?
Because there's nothing they can do legally was my understanding.
Right, it's the same engine that's on a, on a lawnmower. So how can you say, it's complicated because how do you say a lawnmower is okay? But a kid, the same engine with the same kind of muffler, with the same noise level, maybe in less, um, a kid riding.
Kid our zone, Mr. Mayor, it's not less.
We have, uh, kids aren't allowed to drive golf carts if they don't have a license, so.
They're not on the street, they're on their own private property.
I've been one of the people who's been driving down Harold and almost had one of these kids come out in front of my car and I've had them swerve. They make it a habit to race the cars. They will ride at the property line and they will race the cars as you're driving down the road.
Man, you are absolutely right. They sit and they wait at the north part of that property for cars to come down and race against them. Inches from the road.
They do not always go straight either and sometimes they zigzag and sometimes they swerve into the bike path as well.
Yes, and that is, that is illegal and that's enforceable and we will, we can do that. As far as just them operating on their own property off of the right of way. I would like to do something, but there, it's private property and they do have private property rights.
And I think my last request was at least a setback.
Yes.
I can't shoot guns in this town. I can't.
Well, I agree with you on the right of.
Shoot off fireworks whenever I want.
There, there is a.
I mean, there's a reason we have setbacks for that kind of stuff. And again, we're talking about public safety. We are talking about health, all, all those things that matter to all of us and rights. Because it's not about their rights. I mean, quite frankly, I don't give a rat's bladder about a 10, 12-year-old kid's rights. I care about my rights and all the people around me. I'm the guy paying the taxes, not the kid. I've been beat out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Floor is open.
Andrew F. Kovich, um, Detroit, Michigan. Council members, uh, you've seen us several different times. And the last time we were here, two weeks ago, um, this council asked us to demonstrate, um, some studies to back up our claims that we had regarding whether having a dispensary at the 10552 Evans Drive, uh, Luna Pier Plaza actually would benefit non-marijuana businesses and whether there wasn't any data to back up those claims. And over the last two weeks, uh, we've prepared a report for you that we've distributed to everyone here and attendants, well as yourself. Uh, for, um, the sake of having this on the record, I wanted to read in, um, some of the studies that we found, uh, for everyone to hear. So, um, starting with, uh, the first study, uh, this is a study out of Plato Data that found a link between dispensaries and increased retail sales. Uh, dispensaries attract customers from both within the community and outside, leading to increased foot traffic in the area. This increased foot traffic can benefit neighboring businesses such as restaurants, cafes and retail stores. Neighborhoods with marijuana dispensaries experienced a 17% increase in retail sales compared to those without dispensaries. This boost in economic activity can help revitalize struggling commercial areas and support local entrepreneurs. A study from, uh, Alpha Root found a link between cannabis tourism and local economic booms. So visitors spend money on cannabis products, hotels, restaurants and other attractions, boosting the state's, uh, tourism industry. So Michigan's cannabis industry has also, uh, responded to the growing demand for cannabis tourism by offering lodges and lounges for visitors. Cannabis tourism has contributed to skyrocketing Michigan's economy and with the state's growing cannabis industry, it's likely to continue attracting visitors. A study from the International Council of Shopping Centers found a boost of shopping center traffic with a dispensary attached. 35% of consumers would be more likely, or should say more inclined to visit a shopping center with legal dispensaries and 32% of consumers would be like, more likely to visit a shopping center with a CBD shop. A report, uh, from the Detroit Metro Times found that newly opened dispensaries eliminate blight. So cannabis dispensaries are also occupying previously abandoned buildings, contributing to the elimination of blight. So once in a while, we hear criticism in the community that the last, uh, thing they need is another dispensary. And this is said by the Hazel Park City Manager, Edward Klobuchar. When those dispensaries come in, they invariably occupy a vacant, often blighted building or an, an underused building and they have definitely helped to improve the appearance of the city. And finally, um, this is on the other side of your, uh, sheet, number six. A Harvard Business School study found that clustering similar businesses improves all the businesses around you. So geographic clusters of related businesses like restaurants, bars and retail shops boost local economic performance. Businesses in strong clusters see higher wages, 2% to 7%, faster job growth and greater resilience during downturns. That last study in particular is where I wanted to jump off, which is to mention business clusters. Um, some of the opponents of our proposal have said, we have enough dispensaries and there might be, uh, adverse effects from healthy competition. And what we wanna add is clustering more dispensary businesses together could, could actually benefit not just the city, not just the community, but also the current dispensaries that are presently situated and licensed within this municipality. So people have said that we're only here to benefit ourselves and that's simply not true. And we've demonstrated that we do have an interest in this proposal and also that there's benefits to the city and the community at large from our proposal moving through. The plaza looking nice. Our tenants have even come before you and told them, and told you that they actively support this and that the benefits that could come from this revitalized Luna Pier Plaza could help them as business owners located in that plaza. We know from previous, uh, city council meetings that this council isn't anti-marijuana. This council's embraced the current, uh, dispensaries, Bose and Green Labs. And our opposition is not anti-marijuana. There are competition. We understand their position and why they have them. And they may have an interest in us not having, uh, this proposal go through. And the thing is that if we lose, then there is a continued blight at the Luna Pier Plaza. If they succeed, we lose, but we're not the only ones that are gonna lose. Ganders and Chateau Louis are gonna lose. They're gonna lose more commercial traffic that can be attracted off of I-77. And per these reports that.
Seventy-five.
Sorry.
Seventy-five.
I'll end by saying, uh, the benefits of approving this MFO extension significantly outweigh the, outweigh the risks and I urge you to make the right choice and to vote to extend the MFO dis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The floor is open. Is he ready?
Freddie Niedemeyer, 10750 Ellen Street. Uh, first and foremost, uh, thank you, council members. I appreciate what you guys do. It's a thankless job, so you guys are here every week, every two weeks, so thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Mayor, speed bumps, any word on that?
Uh, yes, we, our, Dave looked at our current speed bumps and they're unusable condition. They're really torn up.
Any way to get them replaced?
Uh, we can look into that and, and see. We're, we're looking, but the ones that we have now are, he, he dragged them out and he said, we can't. We gotta drill a hole in the road to put them in.
Well, there was already a hole drilled, but I figured probably, you say the damage is probably because of removing and replacing it.
They're, they were not usable condition is what he said.
Okay.
So we're, we're looking into that further. We'll have to purchase something.
Thank you, appreciate that. Um, signage, um, before we get into the new signs that you guys are talking about, I'm sure everyone's driving up and down the highway, whether it's 23 or 75, and you guys will see those signs that advertise for the city, the businesses that are there. I'm currently working with an MDOT contact to try and see what it is that. I'm currently working with an MDOT contact to try and see what it is that we can do to try and generate some of the knowledge and noticeably for our businesses, right? What does it take to get the, you know, the gas station sign, or what does it take to notify people of Gander's or Cafe or the dispensaries that are in town? So, I'm working on that, trying to find out what the process is, and then I can get you guys some more information on that. And then in regards to the tire issue, he mentioned Eagle. We'll see if he can get us pointed so that they can help us remove those tires, you know, get rid of them, et cetera. The commercial size for the sign, that's a great question. You know, it's something you guys have to vote on, right? It's one of your item agendas. So, what happens if we put something in the plaza? How do we manage that, right? How do we manage the sign, the blinking lights, the noticeably when people come off the highway? What does that do to us? You guys have a hot topic that you guys have to vote on. You know, we've heard before that some of the residents do not want to see that first thing when they come off the highway. And you already heard it firsthand from his mouth. If you don't approve it, they're not fixing the building, setting himself. These are not my words, those are his. So, um, you know, we mentioned the information, he gave you studies about some of the stuff in regards to revenue boost. Well, what is the dispensary that we have here done to boost our revenue? Where's that study? Or the revenue from Exit 11? How's it impacted those businesses? Those are the ones right next to us. I don't need a general study for all of Michigan. I want to know how it's going to impact us, right? So, I mean, if you guys have to hold off on your vote to try and get that information, it might be worthwhile. You know, why would we put ourselves in that position to say that, you know, this affects the entire state, when we're a small community? How's it affect us? You know, these are decisions that are going to impact us forever. We made a decision on Bose, but yeah, it's just like at Green Labs. It's not on the main road, it's off. Let those two competitions fight each other and see how that plays out. You know, right now, they're not really impacting each other, once it's in place, right? The only thing that Green Labs would have above it is history, that they've been there longer. Mixed use, just wanted to bring up in regards to that. That, again, that you guys have to vote on tonight is the current zoning, not what's recommended in the new master plan. I know there was some confusion with Mr. Lucarelli last time we had a hearing, but again, it's on our current zoning, which would affect everything that goes up to 75. So, when you consider that, please take that into consideration. It could impact a lot of area. And that's really all I have. I, again, thank you guys for your time. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the floor is open.
Scott Roberts, Troy, Michigan. So, you know, we bought this property last year because we thought we could create a win-win for the city, the residents, and quite frankly, for ourselves as well. And, you know, this is not my first cannabis dispensary development. This is actually my fourth. I've done two in E-course, one at 323 Southfield Road and one at 337 Southfield Road. I would mention as part of that, we did sponsor a $25,000 scholarship for graduates of E-course High School, as well as donated to the schools. But what I really want to talk about is my dispensary development in Ferndale, because it's very similar, I believe, to what we're talking about now. So, in Ferndale, we had this property. It's 1300 East Nine Mile. I very much encourage you guys, you all have smartphones, to look at what it looks like now. But let me tell you what it was three to four years ago. Three to four years ago, it was a patch of highly contaminated soil. It was a brownfield site. There used to be a metal stamping plant there. The stamping plant went bankrupt, and then there wasn't funds to actually clean it up or remediate the contamination. And we saw this as an opportunity. We saw this as something where we can take a piece of property that is unloved and was not going to be subject to any significant development anytime soon, and we could turn it into something nice. And we could, you know, do well for ourselves, but also help the city in the process. And as part of that development, we put a store there, a new-built store, and we also added a retention pond and a little mini park in the back. And like I said, I very much encourage you, everyone here has a smartphone, 1300 East Nine Mile Road, King of Bud's. So, I bring that up because, you know, the strip mall has struggled. And that's not me, that's not Joe, that is every single owner, to my knowledge, that has had that strip mall or shopping plaza. I know at least one of the owners of the shopping plaza ended up having to turn the keys back to the bank because he couldn't even make his mortgage payments on it. And the reason that is, is because that development is tough. It doesn't have a Luna Pier Road curb cut, it never will. State of Michigan is just absolutely not going to allow that. And that results, among other things, in market rents about $8 a foot. And at those market rents, you know, we'd love to do a lot of nice stuff. I mean, look at what I've done in Ferndale, but we can't. I mean, I've, just not, from a business perspective at least. And, you know, the way we can solve that, which is essentially really bad property-level economics, is the way I solve the Ferndale problem, which is cannabis dollars. I can make three times rent and 1/3 of that plaza that I would compared to the entire other 2/3 of the plaza. I mean, that's the difference between the cannabis company rents and what is, you know, normal market rents, the type of rents that Angel pays, or Tom pays, or the battery shop pays. So, you know, the thought was, hey, well, he shouldn't have bought it if he can't improve it. And, you know, it's not blighted, but could it look nicer? Sure. Could we do some better landscaping, do a facade relift? Would love to. But we needed to make business sense. And the only way I know for it to make business sense is to use cannabis dollars, because that changes the economics of the property. So, you know, this would make, you know, if you were to approve this, this would make the shopping plaza nicer looking, but, you know, that's not the only benefit here. You know, there would be increased traffic for local businesses. We don't have a Luna Pier specific study because one does not exist, but we do have some other studies that do demonstrate that. You know, there, Luna Pier would also be gaining a community partner. I'm not going to go here and make any forward-looking promises, but I would say, you know, we did sponsor the trunk or treat, we worked with the city on the tree lighting, and we also donated our parking to the Boy Scouts so that they can sell the parking spaces during the Freedom Festival, which actually makes me a little jealous because I was a Boy Scout and we had to sell wreaths in the cold and wasn't very fun. But, you know, good for them. And, you know, last but not least, is it's an estimated $58,000 per year in additional revenue. And this is revenue that's unrestricted. So, I ask simply that you guys use your common sense. This is something that everyone wins. We win, the city wins, the residents win, even Green Labs wins. They're just maybe a little short-sighted and don't quite see it yet. So, I ask you to vote to extend it over, like, thank you.
Got a question for you, Dr. Niedemeyer. What did you say the name of the marijuana place was on Nine Mile?
Uh, King of Bud's.
You said King Bud's. So, do you own King of Bud's on 11?
I sold it, so it's Cafe, or Family Ventures, is the company, was actually named after or in honor of my grandmother. And they, that is still the company name, but we sold the operating entity to King of Bud's.
Okay. Is there any plans, if you were to be granted approval on this, are you actually wanting to follow through with renovations and open up the business, or is there talks of selling it to somebody else?
Our plan is to open it up.
And how long would it take for renovation?
Three to six months.
Three to six months.
And that would start immediately, upon approval?
Uh, well, we got to do some architectural work first, so there's, you know, some delays.
But we would see something happening up there upon approval immediately, though?
I think we would do some investments in landscaping right away.
In regards to landscaping, being that one of our major issues with this in the past is that the citizens did not want a dispensary right on the main drag where it was in full view of everybody coming down Luna, you know, Luna Pier Road, would it be possible through landscaping to create some sort of a living wall or some sort of retaining wall that would limit the site into there as a compromise?
I don't know the answer to that, because I don't even know if that would be allowed per the city's...
Right, we may have, we probably have zoning that...
Right, but I mean, with landscaping, there's tall grasses that go with the beach aesthetic. There are efforts that could be made to disguise the building. Would that be something that you guys would be willing to do?
I'm not sure that's fair to the other tenants, to be honest with you. You know, they, they need visibility and traffic.
Oh, yeah, there's signage.
Yeah, I mean, so, I'm kind of, because, you know, I don't know how you would kind of disguise us without disguising Angel or Tom or...
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying like, put up a 10-foot-tall brick wall or anything like that. And you talked about landscaping. You know, if you have everything nicely decorated, you know, little whatever, plants and stuff, that is what people are going to focus on more than, as they're driving down the road versus looking at the building specifically, you know?
I mean, we could explore that. I just don't want to commit to anything right now that I can't necessarily commit to or would hurt the existing tenants at the plaza.
But it would be a concept that you would be open to?
I'd be open to it.
If it fits with everything else.
Yeah. Any other questions? Since I'm up here. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
And the floor is open. Everybody?
Hello. Joanne Steiger, 10936 Harold Drive. I just have a question on the study, Scott. That number three, it said, "The study found a boost to the shopping center traffic. Thirty-five percent of consumers would be more inclined." So, does that mean 65% would not be inclined?
I think for 65%, it wouldn't make a difference.
Okay, and the same thing, 32% would be more likely, so that's 68% would not be likely or would not make a difference. I'm just saying, that's... And the study, I have to agree, the size of Luna Pier, we have two stop signs, it's very small, so this would be, I... When you first pull in, you would see it and, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The floor is open. Toby?
Toby from 4423 Oak. So, I'm curious.
Sorry?
People bitching, coming into Luna Pier, going to look over there at that, but they don't have a problem looking at that Luna Pier Market that looks like crap. So, I'm just curious. I'd rather see that than the Luna Pier Market. Number two, as far as the blight, and Mary, you've lived out there as long as me, or I've lived out there longer than you. People bitching about the blight? Luna Pier Market again. And everybody wants to complain about the community, but nobody wants to stick up for the kids here. Hence being our school. And number three, riding a motorcycle in Harold Yard? I'd tell you guys to get bent if that was me, because my kids are going to ride. And what about the motorcycles that come up and down on Harold Drive that are very loud? I hear them from my house. Are you going to outlaw that too? So, I'm just saying, blight needs to start with that Luna Pier Market. And did we get signs yet for the crosswalk?
There is one across from the post office.
I did not see it.
Yeah, I saw that the other day, and I was thinking of you.
Perfect.
I think there was two purchased, but we've still got lots more crosswalks. It was in the financial, that there was two purchased.
Yep, there's more on the way. We are...
But it is up because I saw it the other day.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Niedemeyer, 10750 Ellen Street. I know I've spoken to you guys before, but I would just like to remind you that if any of you have driven up and down I-75, then you know that regardless of what dispensaries have to do in terms of cleansing the air and installing filtration systems, you can smell it. We already have Green Labs, and I don't know about you guys, but on Ellen Street on a nice summer day, if the wind's strong enough, I do smell that, although it's setback, so it's not horrible. We've already approved a second dispensary now to come in. This would be the third one. Is that really what we want our town to smell like when people come in to enjoy the beach or families living here? Please consider that. Additionally, I've mentioned before, I'm a pet owner and I love Angel, but I don't want my dog coming home smelling like marijuana. So, again, even though they put in filtration systems, I've read studies and I would gladly email them to you that say, in a strip mall or a shopping center, stores have left, our vendors have left stores that are located right next to a dispensary because they could not control the smell. So, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Floor is open. Going once, twice. Okay, we'll close the public comment. Appreciate everybody's input. We need to identify problems in this matter so that we can solve them, and we welcome your comments. Moving on to council action. Item A is a planning commission recommendation, marijuana facility overlay. Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the planning commission's recommendation of adding parcel 5851-003-007-50 at 10552 Evans Drive in the marijuana facility overlay district as presented, waiving the reading.
Do we have a motion? Do we have support? Any support for the motion?
I'd like to discuss the existing overlay as it stands with the signage.
Okay, I'll take it as, A, lack of support, because I didn't get a motion on that. Somebody wants to, last chance. What is your comment?
So, in our zoning ordinance, we have signage requirements for marijuana facilities. There are some items in there that are addressed, and it does start in Section 3404. Point one, marijuana facilities must comply with the following regulations. Point F says, "Signage requirements for marijuana facilities are not permitted as stated in Article 24, Section 2410, Comma 9, I-1 District, and shall comply with 24 Sections 2400 and 2401, 3, B-1 District Requirements." 2410 doesn't exist in Article 24. The other item is that the way that it's addressed here, as I understand it, steps I-1 down to B-1. However, there's no addressing for the other zones. I just wanted to get clarification on that.
Actually, I had, I think I had that up. I did not have that up. That is, as far as signage, that is something that really should be addressed in the future along with pretty much every other sign ordinance in the country. It goes back to Reed versus Gilbert, which is a Supreme Court case that made pretty much every sign ordinance in the country obsolete because of, basically what it said is that you can't use content of the sign in your regulation, so that you can't say a political sign is, has to be removed by a certain time, but a real estate sign is okay if it's the same size and everything. If you have to redesign to interpret it, then, then that's unconstitutional regulation of speech. Now, it's a lot more complicated to that, and in fact, it's been, there are elements going back and forth ever since then, and it has to do with commercial signs. Commercial signs are regulated differently. It's getting to the point where some of that stuff is getting to settle down. I think you would have to, I mean, it's something we need to address. I think you would have to, I mean, it's something we need to address, but I don't think it's a deal breaker. Obviously, the typo and any clarify, any ambiguities we would have to correct in our ordinance. I don't think it, and this is coming from our lawyer, that it's feasible to hold everything up until you can do that, because it's such a long process, and it's still being litigated. Does that answer that at all?
It, it, it does to an extent. I, I just, I hear both support and non-support for the matter, and I would be remiss to not, uh, address the, the visibility portion. And, and I think largely that is signage, um, as I understand it, and that's why I was asking the question.
Is, is that something you would consider tabling?
I would consider tabling that, just to be able to get a little bit more clarification. If we can speak to, um, uh, how we can address the visibility pieces, I think that that would be fair to everyone.
Okay.
So I guess that being said, can I make a motion to table this discussion while we get some clarity?
You, you can, because the, the motion
Didn't hear.
Didn't, didn't, uh, have support, so you can make a motion.
Can you read it as a table and then the paragraph?
I propose to table.
Hold on, yeah, sorry. Hooked on phonics was never my strong suit. Yeah, I propose a motion to table the Planning Commission's recommendation of adding parcel fifty-eight fifty-one dash zero zero three dash zero zero seven dash five zero at ten fif, ten five five two Evans Drive into the marijuana facility overlay district.
Pending.
Pending clarification on the signage.
I will support.
Okay, we have a motion, we have support. Discussion. Anything to add? Let's do a roll call vote.
This is for table?
Yes. Charlie has a lot to write there.
Charlie's.
It's a vote, yeah, it's a, it's a motion and with support to table it.
Yes, to table.
Clarify.
Just to table.
Yep, yes, to table it. Okay.
Okay, um, Wakeman?
Yes.
Boslooper?
Yes.
Skatulski?
Yes.
Needing?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Your gardener?
Yes. Uh, the, the council action is tabled until we can further clarify that. Planning Commission recommendation downtown mixed district zoning. We have some choices there on the motion.
So what I find interesting about this is typically these types of, uh, agenda items don't come at us in this manner.
They don't.
It's usually the flip to, to, to do something, right, and not necessarily to not do something.
Yes.
So, it's quite, it's quite interesting on this one, so that's a point of clarification. Um, I think there's also a good opportunity for planning to take another look at it. Just to, clearly, it's the, it's the by right that is.
Correct.
It's, it's, it's obviously in their opinion that the by right portion of that doesn't allow for proper, um, management and process of anything that is proposed to go in any of that district, right? So, as I watched the council meeting that Council Needing mentioned, special land use permitting, anything of that nature will not preclude planning approval. It will not preclude, preclude council approval. It will not preclude any other regulations and stipulations that they have to adhere to so that the management process of anything coming in can effectively have the same outcome, but at least there was a, there was a determination by more bodies than just a by right that says, I don't need council, I don't need planning, I don't need anything, I meet these requirements by right.
Correct.
So I think it's fair that, um, planning could take another look at this.
Yes.
Because we are open to commerce here, we are open to tourism here.
Yes.
Not necessarily cartwheels.
Yeah, and if I can explain a little, you know, what our options are, really are to, deny it completely. We can override the planning and prove it, or we can send it back to planning.
Right.
Those are really our three options into which I'm hearing.
To, to chime in, um, in the last meeting, there was a misunderstanding of what the standing zoning ordinance was, and I think the, uh, application was filed with the intent for the, uh, what was proposed in the master plan and not what is currently existing.
Correct, not the current map.
So I do think that sending this to the Planning Commission to, um,
Address that as well.
Address that as well, uh, makes a lot of sense.
And I would like to add as well, we, we currently already allow cocktail lounges and microbreweries in the city of Luna Pier. However, there are, as far as, unless I'm misunderstood, they're only allowed in two different places. And one would be the Boat Harbor, and the other one would be the Shopping Plaza. So, we, we already allow that here, period. I don't agree with making the whole city the same way, but we can restrict that down to a specific area instead of making it, you know, we can get as specific as, you know, north side of this road, south side of that road from here to here. So, there, there's a lot you can do with it to keep it contained.
Like another overlay?
Before, before we get too far ahead, it's probably good to put a motion on the table. So if anybody has a question.
I'll make a motion to send the Planning Commission's, well, see, that's gonna read funny. I'll make a motion to send the recommendation of the downtown mixed, mixed district zoning new use as a no from Planning Commission to reconsider a different approach that includes, or that is not as binding as the by right. Includes other options than by right, as well as considers the mixed-use areas intent.
I'll support.
I'll support that.
We have a motion, I think we have support. Not Charlie Wright, that's a lot of.
Yeah.
YouTube.
I'm watching.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have support. Any more discussion on that? Let's do a roll call vote.
Wong?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Skatulski?
Yes.
Boslooper?
Yes.
Wakeman?
Yes.
Needing?
Yes.
Your gardener?
Yes, thank you very much. Motion carried to send them back to Planning Commission to their busy plate. We appreciate them. Uh, very important role in the city. Moving on to item C, Resolution nine seventy-eight, category B funding. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number nine seven eight, category B program funding request for one hundred and five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to construct road rehabilitation on Gania Road as presented and waive the reading.
Support.
We have a motion, we have support. Any discussion on that? Roll call vote?
Wong?
Yes.
Wakeman?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Needing?
Yes.
Skatulski?
Yes.
Boslooper?
Yes.
Your gardener?
Yes, thank you very much. Motion carried. Uh, Great Lakes Greenery sign?
I propose a motion to approve the Great Lakes Greenery sign replacement with a new lighted sign in the road right-of-way at the corner of Luna Pier Road and Madison Street as presented, waiving the reading.
We have a motion. Do we have support?
Support.
We have a motion, support. Any discussion on that?
Well, I will, to, to Dewey's, or excuse me, to Council Wong's point, I think this may fall under the same category.
That's the last.
So, the, the motion and second has already been made, so there has to be a vote.
Although.
They already have an existing sign.
No, on D. But, but the sign is.
Green Labs sign, we have an existing sign there.
Yeah, there's already.
Replacement of what is currently there.
I think, I think it does fall into a category, and I can't think of any ambiguity. It, this is very, this one's very clear in our current sign ordinance, the, the regulations.
As to what?
As to.
We can't say no, or?
I'm sorry, I'm not convinced, so.
Right, I, no, I think it's, yeah, I, I think it's, um, it, it complies. There's really nothing in there that would, that Reed versus Gilbert would, um, change. It's really a very standard commercial sign, and I don't know of any cases, I've, I've actually followed that for a number of years. I don't know of any cases that fit something like this. There's been cases of, is it a mural or is it a sign, or things like that. You're telling one thing, and, you know, if you allow this size sign, we're not regulating what that sign says. You don't have to read it. It's the dimensions of the sign which is perfectly, uh, identified in our, in our, uh, sign ordinance and our zoning ordinance of where it can go. We, we hear, we hear all the time that, um, you know, we made them go way in the back, and you know, I'll, I'll argue that. That was their proposal to go back there. But I don't think this is a very intrusive sign. You would, you know, this is four feet, four inches. The, the sign itself actually is four feet by four inches, and the total height with the base is six feet high. It's not a huge sign.
So if I understand you correctly, you're saying that the existing sign and this sign are one and the same?
They're very, very similar. I mean, it's a newer sign, the size, dimensions might be close. This one might be.
I'd say six foot. Six foot's a lot taller than what they have out there right now.
They have maybe three foot.
Yeah.
Right, but it's within our.
But that's what we're approving.
Yeah, and, and Mike Dembski already approved this and said that, that sign complies with our zoning ordinance. He said, but because it's on the city right-of-way, that's, that's the reason council. He could approve that sign if it was up along the building without council approval because we already voted that, said it's okay with, according to our zoning ordinance and our sign ordinance.
We're just approving to be where it's at already, there.
Yes, and we already.
Which, again, it's gonna cut your eye the minute you drive into the city, much more than what the one does now.
It'll be covered up by that tree mostly anyway, so.
It is, but at the same time, I've almost rear-ended people who have stopped in the middle of the road because they don't know where to go, because they don't see the current sign.
That, that is true, and I've seen it too. I've been stopped and asked for directions, and they, they drove right past it. I think this will help traffic in the city, too.
Well, we have a motion and a second, so let's vote.
Let's do a roll call vote.
Boslooper?
Yes.
Skatulski?
No.
Needing?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Wakeman?
No, excuse me, no.
Wong?
No.
Your gardener?
Yes. What was that?
So there's.
Four to three.
Four to three? Uh, motion, motion carried. Thank you very much. Good discussion on that, and I understand all sides of it. Council input and information? I think we start on this side.
It's a tough one. I, I would like to say that in the best interest of the city, I do believe that when we revisit these things, we're revisiting them just to get another look and a gander at uh, the standards that we're setting and to be fair to everybody, so, um, it's tough. I understand that. You watch us every two weeks, and it's, uh, believe us, we do want the best for everyone, so that's why I come.
Agreed. Bossa.
Yep.
Councilor, Councilor Skatulski?
Um, I agree with Councilor Wong.
Councilor Boslooper?
I agree a hundred percent with you, and I do want to remind everybody of May twenty-seventh, the public hearing. For everybody to attend and don't just stand back and complain about it.
Yep, it's the future of our, it's the future of our city. Councilor Perry?
Just the Freedom Fest is on its way, June twenty-eighth. Uh, we'll be selling fifty-fifty raffle tickets, um, starting in the beginning of June, and the raffle will be, um, pulled on the Freedom Festival, probably at nine, nine P.M.
Have you met your goal?
Yes, yes, we have.
But we need down payment for next year.
Yeah, we do need down payment for next year, so this is, hence fifty-fifty.
Councilor Wakeman?
All set, thanks.
Councilor Needing?
Um, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and I, I will agree, this, this is a hard job, and we all really want the best for the city. It's, there are no easy answers to hard problems. And, uh, we appreciate the input from the community as well as our, our council. We have no correspondence received and sent. We have our public hearing, as mentioned, May twenty-seventh, six P.M. here at Water Tower Park. This is our five-year master plan update. We really encourage everyone to look that over and give us your input. Future meeting dates, parks and recreation, Tuesday, June tenth, seven P.M. at the library. Flood and Erosion, Tuesday, June seventeenth, seven P.M. Water Tower Park. Planning Commission, Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, six P.M. Water Tower Park with the public hearing. DDA immediately filing?
That is the incorrect. We had our DDA meeting this week.
Oh, that's right.
Moved up, so I'm, uh,
Okay.
um, scrolling frantically here. Uh, June twenty-fourth.
June twenty-fourth?
Yes.
At the lighthouse.
Lighthouse.
So there'll be no conflict.
It's up.
Planning that we can see. City Council, Thursday, June twelfth, seven P.M. Water Tower Park. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you very much.